Meeting to order, we'll do the pledge of allegiance starts. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome, everybody. First meeting of the fall, end of the summer. And we'll start, is there anyone who would like to make any comments in the audience this evening? We have any audience? Not so much, okay. Onto routine business. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the June ninth, twenty twenty two Board of Education Business Meeting.
So move.
I'll second that.
Thank you, or is there any comments or editing on this meeting? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Turned opposed. Abstaining, okay, that passes, now we're looking for a motion to accept the minutes of the July fourteenth, twenty twenty two Board of Education Special Meeting.
Shall move. Second.
Thank you, Chris, are there any edits or comments on these minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed or abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay. Close minutes pass. Now I'm looking for a motion to accept the minutes of the August sixteenth, twenty twenty two Board of Education Special Meeting.
Shall move.
I'll second.
You've been, Andrea, do we have any comments or edits on this meeting? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed or abstaining?
I'll abstain.
Thank you, Chris. That motion passes as well. Board of Education Committee reports, I don't believe we've had any. No, we haven't. Community meeting reports, have we had any of those, anyone attended any meetings lately? All right, I'll now turn things over to the superintendent for the superintendent of schools reports.
Thank you very much, good evening, everybody. Welcome almost to the first day of school, so we have, first item is about DPH and CSTE guidance for schools. And I sent out a, the most recent information to families and staff last week. According to DPH and CSTE, the focus of the updated guidance is to minimize the impacts from respiratory disease outbreaks and maximize successful in-person learning. And employ respiratory disease prevention measures with maximizing in-person participation opportunities for children. The guidance is meant to supplement state guidance from the CDC. The CDC, Department of Public Health and CSTE put out sort of three bullet points, the first was to start healthy with vaccination. Urging children and staff to be up to date with their COVID nineteen vaccinations prior to the start of the school year. As well as to be on the lookout for seasonal influenza vaccines as they become available this fall. Um. Sorry, I was checking in with Diana and Sue and that was Diana texting me, she's not going to be able to make the meeting tonight. The next piece was to maximize in-person learning with symptom awareness and at-home testing. So DPH has advised that children and staff with mild respiratory disease symptoms, an infrequent cough, congestion, runny nose, sore throat, et cetera, no fever. And no known COVID nineteen case in their household should self-test at home for COVID nineteen prior to leaving for school every day that they have symptoms and can be allowed to attend in-person. If their test result is negative and they feel well enough to participate. Anyone with a fever or who feels fever should not report to in-person until the fever has resolved for at least twenty-four hours without the use of medication and they should test for COVID nineteen. Children and staff choosing to report for in-person with mild symptoms are strongly encouraged to wear a well-fitting mask. And for those who have tested positive, it's the same isolation procedure for five days that we were employing last spring. Day zero is the day of symptom onset. Or the day of a positive test result in alignment with current CDC DPH guidelines. Students and staff may return on day six if they have no symptoms, however, it will be mandatory to wear a mask at school on days six through ten after a positive case. Families can order self-test kits and I gave them the link for that, we also are going to be handing out. A box of test kits to every student and staff member and more information is going to be coming from the school principals about that. Once school starts because we have a supply of tests that are due to expire in October that we received from the state last spring. So we are handing those out for people to use if they should need to do so between now and October. And we have just received a new shipment from the state of test kits that we can have available for families and staff should they need them. And the last piece is to use available prevention tools based on conditions in our area. School districts will still be required to report the number of COVID nineteen cases to the CSTE and DPH. Going to continue to use the CDC COVID nineteen community levels and consult with Eastern Highlands Health District. To determine when to apply enhanced measures for prevention of respiratory viral diseases, COVID nineteen and influenza. And we will be contacting DPH and Eastern Highlands Health District if we experience case clusters or outbreaks at a school. And we will be seeking guidance related to enhance mitigation measures as the CD, DPH guidance has suggested. And should any changes happen, we will be sharing those changes as they occur. Any questions for me on that part? Chris?
Thank you, Kristen. Yeah, I could say several questions about, about all of this. One. Our, how is the district going to be enforcing the mask mandate and how are you going to do that without violating HIPAA provisions, assuming that they come into effect? Because I assume that teachers and staff will need to know that a student should be masking. So how, how do you convey that without also conveying health information about the student to the staff?
HIPAA does not apply to schools, so that is a non-issue for us.
Okay, good. Do you anticipate it being an issue having to? And do we have, you know, are, are existing policies sufficient to handling any disciplinary issues that might crop up around mask compliance in this area?
Yeah, I mean, I believe so at this point in time, you know, and I'm hopeful that people will be respectful of this. Because this is, this is straight out of the guidance that we're given, right? The other pieces, certainly they can choose to opt to have their child remain home for ten days if they don't want to wear a mask, they certainly have that option. Should they so choose to do so with the knowledge though that. You know, we no longer have online learning available, so students can no longer, as I shared in my letter home to families. This is state law, this is not a Bolton thing, can no longer log into Google Classroom. And be at home while the teacher is live in the classroom with other students, so they will be, students will be receiving makeup materials, if you will, whether it be through Google Classroom likely at the high school. Or, or it might be packets of work potentially at the elementary level like used to happen prior to COVID.
Okay, yeah, that answers my third question, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all right, so hearing none for facilities update. Our custodians have been super busy all summer and have done an amazing job of having our schools ready to go, right now they're working on the outsides of our building so that we're spick and span and ready to go for Monday. They did a quarter of the floors. In both buildings have been stripped and waxed and the rest have been scrubbed in wax, you may recall that we're on a cycle now of every four years of doing that. All the filters are being changed in the ventilation system to keep them operating as recommended. We have temporary air-conditioned units arriving at BCS, which will be there for the month of September and they will arrive back again for the last month of school. Clearly, this is not a perfect option, but it certainly does help to keep things more comfortable than they would be without. Maintenance has been doing repairs in classrooms and a lot of time has been spent changing the ballast and power supplies for the lighting at the high school. And work on the ADA transition pads on the high school walkway. We had three big projects that were completed this summer, the first was that the classroom lock project has been completed, so I'm happy about that. Mainly at Center School, but we had some at the high school and central office as well. The main control system for the HVAC has been updated and then the old hardware. Wait, sorry, so the third was the first phase of the window blinds being replaced, so the newer section of BCS was done because that was in the worst shape. As well as the exterior windows of the commons at the high school, which was most area identified as most needed. We've had contractors outperforming preventative maintenance to the operating system for both schools HVAC controls, required inspections to the fire alarms, systems, sprinklers, fire extinguishers. Kitchen hood vent systems have all been completed, John is working still to find a company that will inspect the fire curtain at BCS, we're having a little trouble actually finding a company that will do that. Anywhere around, the fire marshal has done his walkthrough and we have a couple of minor things to address in the next couple of weeks. We have two issues that have just come up, I'd like to share with you, the first was the AC unit at BCS that cools off the office area, which is up on the roof. One of the two compressors on the rooftop condensers died. The system has R twenty-two refrigerant, which is currently being eliminated. Our contractor was able to find a compressor and will be changing it out this Friday, weather permitting. The cost of that was about forty-five hundred dollars, but if we have a problem with the other compressor or any other part of the AC system, we will not be able to repair it likely. Because things just aren't available anymore. A new system will need to be installed, which we don't want to do because we need to replace that roof and replace those. Units, the other issue has occurred at the high school where we're getting a low temperature alarm from the geothermal vault, which is unheard of in the summertime. We had train come out to replace the sensor, but when they opened up the manhole cover to the vault, it was completely full of water. That is supposed to be. A airtight fault, there should have been no water in there. So we've been working with the insurance provider following their recommendations on how to proceed. To see if this is an insurance claim that can be covered. The vault is in a confined space, so we are not equipped to enter it. We were able to see that there is lighting and a heater that is down there. And so we're in the process of this inspection piece with the insurance company right now. Any questions for me on those pieces? So hearing none, while I'm talking about facilities, I just want to bring up to our. Temporary building committee that we will need to find a date or a couple of dates to send out to the selectmen and certainly all board members will be invited to attend this meeting. To hear from the company that did the HVAC. Evaluation piece on what our potential options could be for air conditioning at Center School. I think we need to do this sooner rather than later because we're going to need to make some decisions about, are we going to try to move forward on this quickly, the roof project or not? The state has appropriated monies out of their. ESSR monies that they receive from the federal government to go towards air conditioning in schools. I can't really tell you any more than that because the state has not really released any more information on their website about how you go about applying for it and what that actually looks like. What I, I was told, I heard in a meeting a week ago that. The monies would have to be expended by twenty twenty-four, so that is a very short window of time to be able to utilize those monies. Have a project ready to go and all of the pieces that are accompanied by that, so. I don't know that that is a true statement about twenty twenty-four, but that is what I have heard, so again, awaiting more information from the state, Scott may know more.
Expended or contracted?
Well, what I heard was expended, Scott, so, and like I said, I'm not sure that that's accurate or if contracted is what's accurate because I didn't hear that information from the state. I heard that from. A member of the superintendent organization who had heard that in a meeting.
Yeah, so that's, if that's the case, then it's. Paying for its. I would think that any, any schools who have already undertaken the project will get reimbursed as opposed to being in line to get money to do the project.
Correct, so that's what I'm, right.
Be unfortunate.
Correct, so I'm just not sure. So I guess when I know more, I'll be able to share that.
It's possible, it's also possible that the engineer has their ear to this as well. That we had hired.
Yeah, and, and John was going to be reaching out to him as soon as, so I'm hoping tonight, maybe we can come up with some dates. To send to the Board of Selectmen to meet.
Okay.
Any other questions about facilities? Okay, hearing none, staffing update. We have had a very, very busy summer. We've had a number of resignations and we have been busy conducting interviews and hiring new staff, so I'm going to share our current list with you to the best of my ability as to where we stand today. We have, joining us for this year is Kelly Bear, is instructional coach at Bolton Center School. Jenna Bernard will be a part-time paraprofessional at BCS, Krista Black, paraprofessional at BCS, Emily Bradley. Math teacher at the high school, Samantha Carteau, cafeteria worker, Caitlin Dunlap, special ed teacher at Bolton High School. Amela, who you all know, has joined us already and started work on Monday at Center School, we're happy to have her as BCS Assistant Principal. Gregory Gallo will be the new art teacher at Bolton High School. Monica Casper, as you know, is our new Director of Teaching and Learning, she started back in July. Melanie Gold, Spanish teacher at the high school, Stephanie Goodwin, remedial reading teacher at BCS. Justin Guglamedy, social studies teacher at the high school, Steven Hevisides, a daily sub. Alan Heffron, a social studies teacher at the high school. Lisa Jordan, part-time reading paraprofessional, Robert Jordan, math teacher at the high school. Matthew Lemire, custodian at the high school, Amy Lundberg, accounts payable clerk in central office. Melissa Mascaro, payroll and benefits in central office. Lori Nichols, long-term sub at BCS in language arts in seventh grade. Emily Paterwick, administrative assistant to Beth, Director of HR and Student Support Services. Sunny Singh, math teacher at the high school. Daily, William Smith, daily sub at BCS, Brittany Soloney, special ed teacher at BCS. Cynthia Trepaniers, administrative assistant for the Director of Teaching and Learning, she will be starting on September fifth. And Kristen Victor, special education paraprofessional at BCS. I conclude my long list. For this evening, so like I said, we've been very busy, but we had new teacher orientation today and it was awesome. And we have some great new staff and I am very excited for the start of the school year. Any questions about staffing?
So how do we stand with regards to unfilled positions versus where we were last year or, you know, when we. Kept having, giving bounty money back to town because we couldn't fill positions, are we in better shape perhaps?
Great question, so as you could see, we've been very busy and two days ago, I would have said to you, we have one unfilled position. Today we have three, we, Katie DeRosier, you will hear me share that tonight, is leaving because she got an assistant principal position at Stafford Middle School. So she will be leaving us the end of September and we. Have another staff member who I can't announce yet because I don't have a letter of resignation, but I am aware is leaving to take a job in another district. So we have two teaching positions and a paraprofessional position that are open, but I will share with you. We're in really good shape compared to where we were by the end of June.
Okay, great.
Great question.
Not, not about the most recent resignation.
No, I, I agree, but good for her, she went back to school to be an administrator, so I'm really proud of her. But it's a great loss for us, for sure. All right, so on to the transition program at the high school, I would just like to express thanks on behalf of the Bolton Transition Program, which is our community-based vocational program for young adults who receive special education services through the Bolton Public Schools. To the Bentley Memorial Library for their ongoing, continuous, wonderful support of our program. The library director, Liz Thornton, and her team have provided our students with numerous opportunities to participate in invaluable work experiences since two thousand and fifteen. Listener staff go out of their way to support our kids, to prepare and explain tasks to our students and support them while they work and we appreciate their partnership on behalf of our students so much, so I just want to publicly thank them. And that concludes my report this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Believe we move on to unfinished business, which I don't think we have any. So new business, resignations?
Yes, so we have a number of them. So. As you know, Jessica Saffron, Assistant Principal at BCS has left us and gone to be a principal in Farmington, we wish her well. Math teacher Renee Midford at the high school, social studies teacher Mark Mishriki. Music teacher Katie DeRosiers, instructional coach Becky Sullivan, remedial reading teacher Chris Feeny. BCS paraprofessional Susan Russo, accounts payable clerk Julia Parsons. Accounts payable clerk Roxanne Elliott. Administrative assistant to Director of Teaching and Learning Lisa Henall. And cafeteria worker Melissa Serignano, and we thank them for their service and wish them all well in their new endeavors.
All right, so here about everyone, hopefully. We have good people to fill all those shoes. Sounds like we have a good start at least. Onto policies, we have a first read for three policies, someone from policy want to take us through that?
I was going to suggest or ask Kristen if she wouldn't mind going through it, because Policy Committee hasn't actually been able to meet about these policies.
Yep, so if you give me one second, I just got to pull it up, give me one second, please. Okay, you, you could hear me, yes? Okay, thank you. All right, so the first policy is policy five-one-four-zero on wellness. The policy that we currently have is an old cave policy in our six thousand series, which is our, kind of our last group to still go through and, and. Change over to shipment policies, shipment has this policy listed in the five thousand series, which is the student series, which is where I believe it belongs. There have been changes that have been made that are not in our current policy, that really this policy needs to be updated and, and moved to the shipment version. So that would be my recommendation for fifty-one forty under wellness. Fifty-one forty-one point nine is improved completion rates of FAFSA, this is a new policy. Public Act twenty-one dash one ninety-nine directs Boards of Education no later than July one of twenty twenty-two. To adopt a policy to improve completion rates of FAFSA by students enrolled in grade twelve or an adult education program maintained by the board. And this policy meets this statutory requirement, new statutory requirement. And then policy number six-one-seven-one-point-three, the equitable identification of gifted and talented students is also a new policy based on new legislation. Public Act twenty-one dash one ninety-nine, which requires Boards of Education no later than July first of twenty twenty-two. To adopt a policy for the equitable identification of gifted and talented students. Must require the use of multiple methods of identification for gifted and talented students that are in compliance with guidance that is provided by CSTE. So again, that one is new and statutorily required.
Seeing as the. Second and third ones that you mentioned were supposed to be enforced as of July one of this year, I believe. Would you want us to try to? Approve those two this evening, I assume that fifty-one fifty can, can wait for a second read?
Fifty-one forty, yeah, um. Definitely the, the latter two for sure. In an ideal world, you would also approve fifty-one forty because we are up for a. Review of our food service program, we're not sure when that's happening this year or if it's happening, it's supposed to be. And that policy language that we need, that's part of statute, that needs to be in that policy is in. That policy, so I, I just don't want us to get dinged for that, but if you want to wait, we'll wait, I just, I'm telling you, I'm just not sure when or if that's happening this year.
I mean, is it likely to happen in the next two weeks? Because that's when our next meeting is.
Good point, I'm thinking a whole month away, yeah, no, it's not, no, it better not be.
Yeah. All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve policies five-one-four-one dot nine and six-one-seven-one dot three. Because they are required to be enforced as of July one, which we are now passed.
Second.
Well, thank you, Chris and Sue, is there anyone who wants to ask any questions or as any comments about either of those two policies?
You know, I'd just like to offer to Chris's point about its legislation that was passed, it's supposed to go into effect for July first, we don't get the legislation update till July. Towards the latter part of July and we don't get policies, you know, until after that comes out, so while the legislature passes things effective July first, we're not being derelict in our duties, I guess is what I would like to offer for that.
Yes, and if I implied that, I apologize.
No, you didn't, but I wanted to clarify that for the record.
Uh, any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay, we'll wait for a second read on fifty-one forty and those two have passed, our next.
Thank you.
Policy is correct.
Yes, thank you.
Next topic is Board of Education meeting format, so this was one that was born from a conversation that Kristen and I had the other day. As, as obvious, we are virtual again this evening. Sort of out of convenience and for all parties and because we haven't really had a chance to discuss. What we would like to do as a board going forward and I don't want to make the decision personally of what to do. There was, had been a temporary. Order that allowed. Governing bodies to have virtual meetings, that was to end in April of twenty twenty-two, since then, the legislature has passed and Governor Lamont has signed. Public Act twenty-two dash three, which continues. For no specified time to allow public agencies to hold remote and hybrid meetings, so. We are allowed to continue to have virtual meetings. I'm sure that people have different viewpoints on this issue. I personally would start by saying that I have conflicting viewpoints. I always, especially at the beginning of virtual meetings, felt that in-person meetings were better from a communication standpoint and just better from a policy standpoint, I suppose. I also have come to recognize that uh virtual meetings are very convenient for all parties intended. Um, you know, the administrators who live in various places, the board members who have various commitments and children's and jobs and travel schedules and all this kind of thing that's allowed, you know, us to have um participation when maybe we other haven't. Also, from a public standpoint, there have been people who have expressed that they would like in-person meetings. There have also been people who express that they like the virtual meetings. I think for some people, one is maybe more preferable and for others, the other. So um I guess I would like to have a conversation about what we as a board would like to have going forward for, you know, the fall. Or maybe, you know, we can, you know, say for the immediate future, like maybe just go to the end of the year. But, you know, we do still have virus uh circulating around that's seemingly low but steady levels and the peaks and valleys. We have, you know, monkeypox rolling around. So I don't know, you know, how we want to go forward or maybe, you know, have a split option. But um, so open the floor to anyone who would like to take this conversation up or express their opinion.
Do we have the capability of having both in-person and um people to zoom in? I know the Board of Finance did that. Yeah, they did. So we ordered an owl. Our issue is that we need um to likely hire somebody to do the management of that because I can't have administrators in front of you in a meeting presenting and whatnot and man. Basically, so and currently, you know, we don't have someone right at the moment to be able to do that.
This, obviously, it's very convenient to be able to just hop on your computer. Um, but I can understand why people would want to have us back in person, especially for parents.
I largely hold the same opinion as Andrew that when this all first started, I thought it would be imperative to get back into in-person meetings. But it, you know, it's it's hard to tell what the public sentiment is since they never come to in-person meetings and they very rarely show up to virtual meetings. I think from an image standpoint, it seems to make more sense to be in-person. Other boards are needing in-person, but certainly the convenience factor can't be argued. So I would, uh, I don't have a strong opinion any longer on either way.
I'm also with the consensus on this one. I'll go, you know, wherever the, wherever we go as a group. But I, it it's, it is awfully easy with kids to be able to just pop on from home. And, you know, I really kind of last minute tonight became daddy daycare because mommy's doing a yoga at the farm. So I had to sit, you know, all that right while we're starting. It's definitely convenient to do it this way.
Yeah, I agree. The convenience factor is a big, I I I I don't really care one way or the other, as long as if we are going back to in-person meetings, that there's an option for hybrid. So that parents and members of the public can tune in via Zoom to our meetings and board members if necessary. Uh, you know, I'm recovering from COVID, so I wouldn't have been able to come to a in-person meeting tonight. So having that option, the Zoom option would uh would be good. And if that means that we have to look into hiring somebody uh to man the owl, I think that's a worthwhile investment to continue the benefits that we have enjoyed from using Zooms.
Um, I sit on a a bunch of committees, and so we've been doing a lot of different things. I I, one of my committees, I do like meeting in person. I think it, we have, we have like more of a workshop component to it, and it helps. I find that that uh the Zoom meeting for the Board of Ed works fine for me. I think we accomplish everything we need to. We also have our little committee meetings that we could maybe meet in person if if that seems like it's helpful. But um I, I mean, I will do whatever everybody want, what the consensus is. But I I do like the Zoom meetings for the Board of Ed meetings. I think parents, we had a big meeting with parents last year and it, you know, we had great participation. And um as far as the owl goes, I know we do use it at for the Bolton Heritage Farm Commission. And nobody really, we have directions to set it, you know, to get it started. And I don't think we had anybody there that to run it. It it's not that difficult, except that you have to have, you know, it's set up in a with the, you know, with a smart whiteboard or whatever it is, yeah.
Right, and that's where we run into some of the difficulty. You're right, it's not hard to use, I and I know that. But that's where we run into the difficulty is we're all presenting. You know, each board meeting, Daryl and Joe are up there giving presentations. Amela and Christine are part of it, you know, Monica or Beth, whatever, right? So for us to manage that and whoever may be at home, we're gonna need a dedicated person because we can't have people running around, you know, trying to cover that. I just think it's, our our meetings are a little different in that respect compared to some of the others, you know?
Yep.
So I will offer, like I said, we're not ready to Ria's point to be hybrid yet. Like, I don't have a person, haven't even sought a person at this point. So September either needs to be full in person or it needs to be uh remote at this point. And maybe October too, you got to give me a little time to at least try to get something to see if we can figure that out.
Well, Chris, I hope you're feeling that. I think maybe for the time being, we should stay with remote. I don't know, everybody seems sort of like that's a necessary component.
We should commit to revisiting it though in a couple of months or whatever it takes.
So do you want to revisit it like October, November?
It sounds reasonable.
It it sounds like we don't have a lot of strong opinion or consensus is that we are all like, wow, sure is convenient. But, you know, maybe we should. Um, if we're not from an infrastructure standpoint, ready, I mean, especially because our next meeting is in two weeks. Um, you know, maybe we'll have more feedback or we'll have, you know, our opinions will evolve by then. Or maybe, you know, we'll see how virus, you know, it's always in the back burner or, you know, comes forward more and less. So, you know, I, like Ben said, I I in the summer, early summer and the spring, I was home alone with my kids. And it was kind of a scramble to, you know, get them fed and ready. And it's like, okay, well, it's movie time at six thirty and you're not to talk to me, you know, like, you know, help the younger one get the water if he needs water or something like, keep it quiet. So, you know, it's, it's, it was very hard for for me to, you know, I'm gonna have to get my mom over here or something if it's so. And it sounds like, you know, everybody's kind of like, you know, if we have sickness or, you know, Chris is in quarantine. You know, certainly, I'm sure the administrators appreciate the ability to have it from different places. And um so for September, maybe October, at least we'll we'll stay virtual and always keep it in the, you know, in our minds, how it may be going forward. We'll reflect more and we'll revisit the issue. So that was pretty easy. I didn't know how anybody was gonna think, you know, we were just.
I think if you get like a strong public opinion leaning towards doing it in person, that we should really consider doing that. But I think if there's not a pu- a strong public opinion to do that, then since it's convenient, we stick with it for a little while and, you know, follow up.
Yeah, I'm thinking about it the other day. I had the idea, and I was like, is it a dumb idea to say that every other meeting is in person? You know, it's kind of arbitrary. But it's the best, you know, but but with the owl thing, the way like the Board of Finance had had worked it, you know, if somebody is traveling or if somebody is in quarantine, they can still be at the meeting and public can still be at the meeting and either setting, so. All right, we'll see. That's a for now hybrid.
I'll put it on the October agenda to revisit, and we will plan to have September and October virtual. How's that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Just just one, I just want to make one comment. One one area I do miss being um in person is the celebrations of excellence. It's um, you know, it would be nice to be there in person for those, especially for those.
I think it's more meaningful for the the celebrant to actually be in presence of people honoring them. I agree.
And for September, I'm not sure we have anything on the agenda for celebration of excellence because it's just the start of school, so that works out okay.
Okay. So that's meeting format. Uh, I think we have a pretty decent consensus for the time being on that. The next item on the agenda was Board of Education's fall meeting dates. This is um because of my personal schedule. So some of you know, I think most of you that I or some, I I'm back in school for brewing science. I am taking courses at um Sacred Heart University who has a brewing science program. My work is putting me through. Part of it involves staying until midnight brewing um at my workplace. I now have an in-person class, and it was unfortunately scheduled for Thursdays. Every other day would have been preferential to me because I have, as I just stated, I'm usually watching my kids. And my wife either stays with her mom or comes home very late on Thursdays. So I am totally having to restructure things, and I haven't uh uh decided, the syllabus actually just came out yesterday. And there is a couple of online days, but it it's like you're expected to be there during those hours. So that would affect for me three classes. And I hadn't even considered, but Kristen mentioned as a possibility, we would switch our meeting day from Thursday to Wednesday. Or I could, I'm willing to skip it or make up a class. Or, you know, maybe they'll just have to miss a meeting or two. But this is, you know, for, it'll be September, October, November. So I don't know how anybody feels about that. I don't know how.
Personally, for me, Wednesdays were fine also, so I could be flexible.
I've got no issue with it.
As long as it's not the first Wednesday of the month, I'm fine.
It works for me. It's actually better. I'll be able to come to October, so that works.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Okay, so it will be um the second Wednesday of the month. Does that work for everybody? Um, the only issue will be finance will have to be that morning because, you know, as it is, we're crunched for time from the end of the previous month to when we get the finance report done. Um, so I can't back finance up a day. So if if that's works for everybody, finance will meet that morning and and we can have the board meeting um at night. And for my administrators, that this may create trouble. If people can't be there while we make the switch for these three months, don't worry about it, we'll figure it out.
So is.
September, October, November is what we're doing?
Andrew?
I'm just putting it in my outlook.
Yeah, what's the um December meeting date?
So.
December would be the fourteenth.
Nope, December is the eighth. The current scheduled meeting, the current scheduled meeting for December is the eighth.
I think that's my last week's class.
So are are we saying it's going to be the day before our scheduled meeting or the actual second Wednesday? Because in two months, that makes a difference.
I know. That's that's what I'm trying to figure out. Is it going to be the day before our meeting or is it going to be? Well, even if it's the second Wednesday of the month, that even matters for September.
Right, I'm saying for September and December, it makes a difference.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I couldn't do September sevenths.
You can't?
I have a meeting, I have a standing meeting first Wednesday of every month.
Okay. All right, so how about if we did this? So I'm trying to think.
It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be the fourteenth of September?
I I'm trying to figure out when Board of Finance meets.
It's usually on a Thursday, isn't it?
It is, but is it the third Thursday or the fourth Thursday? I don't know.
The third Thursday. I'll just confirm that quickly, but. Now, it's possible they may change things with Emily stepping down and having a new chair and new member. But currently, now their September meeting is September fifteenth. So yes, that's the third Thursday, October twentieth, November seventeenth, and December fifteenth.
Oh, yeah, so. Where I, I I'll just have to figure out, they're just gonna, I mean, if we move the meeting to September fourteenth and then, I'm just trying to think out loud. I I've got to get them the information about the finance report for their meeting the next night. I mean, it it is, it is what it is, I guess.
Well, we can always keep it on Thursday.
The Thursday, the eighth, keep September as is?
Yeah, I mean, if there's any individual monthly conflicts, yeah, we could do that.
All right, so what if we kept September eighth, but then in October, we could do October twelfth? Can everybody do that? Okay, so we will move, that'll be a Wednesday in October. November, can everyone do November ninth? Ria, is that okay for you?
Um, hold, I'm just. November ninth, yes.
Okay, great. And then December, we're gonna run into the same issue. I think we have to keep December eighth because December fourteenth will be the day before the Board of Finance meeting.
Or we could do December seventh.
You could. I wouldn't be able to make that.
But.
No, I, we usually uh December meeting is usually, there is usually one, so December sevenths would work for me.
Okay.
Me too.
Okay, so we will change October, from October thirteenth to October twelfth. November is going to be November ninth, Wednesday, and December will be Wednesday, December seventh, right?
We're far enough out that if any conflict comes up, we can adjust.
Well, so the problem becomes, I'm going to notify the town clerk tomorrow. And I'm hopeful that she will say we're far enough out where these don't become special meetings. Because if they become special meetings, then if we need to add something to the agenda, we are not allowed to do so by how that works. Um, so just letting everybody know that, okay? It's not to say we can't, to Ben's point, but then it becomes a special meeting. So I just need to get clarification from her on these as well. And I'm hoping it's enough time, okay?
Yeah, if there's any problems, we'll just go back to originally scheduled program, and I'll have to either, you know, I'll make it work. I haven't been to this class yet, you know, back when I was in regular college, I skipped all kinds of classes.
All right, thank you, Larry.
But this is.
This is.
I'm a beer college, I just can't be even more. Okay, thank you very much. Um, on. Onto the ever-popular future business. I don't think we have any.
Other than we need to find a date to meet with the Board of Selectmen about that. So we'll, we'll work on that.
Yes, as previously mentioned. Okay, so now we're looking for a motion to go into executive session and to invite the superintendent for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's goals and school cybersecurity safety.
I make a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Ria and Sue. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Abstaining. All right. Thank you, everyone else for coming.